For August 11th, to order.
Ms. Callahan, you call the take a roll call?
Okay, do we have a motion?
The certification of proceedings?
I move that the closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the closed meeting be concluded and that the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any discussion?
None.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it.
Have a motion at a closed session?
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation for readmission in student case numbers 081114A, 081114B, and 081114C.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation for readmission in student cases, case numbers 08114A, B, and C. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Dr. Jack, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Citizens time. Do we have anybody signing up?
No.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to make any comments during citizen time?
Okay. So that does that. All right. Announcements. Convocation, and do not miss convocation this year, for all Faukeer County Public Schools' employees will be held on Wednesday, this Wednesday, August 13th, at Kettle Run High School at 9:30 a.m. Preceding the convocation at 7:30 a.m., the Human Resources Department will hold a wellness and benefits fair. There will be a personnel committee meeting Thursday, August 14th, at 8:00 a.m. in the school administration conference room. There will be a finance committee meeting Thursday, August 14th, at 5:00 p.m. at the school administration conference room. Chairman's night will be Monday, August 25th, at 5:00 p.m. at the school administration conference room. And there will be a school board work session on Monday, August 25th, at 6:00 p.m. at the school administration conference room. There will be a building committee meeting Thursday, August 28th, at 8:30 a.m. in the school administration conference room. And there will be a health advisory committee meeting Wednesday, September 3rd, at 8:00 a.m. at the Central Complex Building Conference Room. And there will be a special education advisory committee meeting Wednesday, September 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. at the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, September 8th, at 7:00 p.m. in this room, the Faukeer High School Falcon Room.
I believe the personnel committee meeting has been canceled.
Okay. So erase that. Okay. All right. Reports. Board members. Do we have any reports? Mr. Gorg?
I would like to report on the conference that Ms. Callahan and I attended back in July through V S B A. And it was a conference on education, and it really was a sort of an idea swap time. There were both sort of general session presentations and then 30-minute roundtable discussions, and you moved table to table on a number of different topic areas. We both went, we had specific things we wanted to look at, specific topics. Ms. Callahan was impressed with the Leadership Academy for Potential Principals, the succession planning topic, and she shared some of these with our administrative staff. She also went to advancing middle school education and digital curriculums. And I will also tell you, I went to a few that I thought were very inspiring. Others validated what we're doing here. So one on using, effectively using funds for security. I think we're on top. We're really doing that effectively and wisely. So that was one of the topics. Another topic was the literacy improvement model and how we evaluate or implement a literacy improvement model, just for the benefit of people. York County seemed to have a really good improvement model process, not the model itself, that's developed, but the process for how they did that. I was really impressed with that. And some common themes came out of that. I was sharing this earlier with Dr. Jack, but the idea of where people are doing well on reading, word usage, et cetera, it's writing that some, many divisions are seeing that they're really challenged on. So it was a lot of sort of validation of what we've been seeing in our division. I also went to one, and I want to commend again, the STEM camps we did this summer. Goochlin County ran, is running a STEM program for K through 5. So they're really trying to improve math and engineering specifically for K through 5. They're running their STEM camps, which are now moving into clubs in the schools and moving into their curriculum based on the science adoption we were looking at in some of the textbooks that are there and the Play-Doh engineering in the kindergarten or first grade. We're moving in that direction. They are finding a lot of success with it. We're very proud of what they've been able to achieve. We're sort of a model in moving in that direction as well. So I think that's just validated what we did this summer with the STEM camps and trying to continue to enlarge that to have more kids go to it. So it's a very good, very good time. The feedback from attendees at the conference was very positive, and I would hope that maybe we might have, be able to actually do a presentation from Faukeer County there next year and not have Prince William have 10 tables themselves. So anyway, it was a very good time, and I'm glad we're still part of that organization because I thought it really brought a lot of great content and knowledge, and I was educated more from it.
Okay. That's great. Mr. Bland?
Madam Chair, I have nothing to report other than the fact that all of us participated in the joint finance and personnel committee meeting here last month. And the minutes are before you, but all of us were present in that meeting.
Okay.
Just the new teacher dinner. Just wanted to say what fun it was, and it was nice to see teachers coming here from Prince William and from Culpeper and from Stafford.
From Loudoun.
And from Loudoun, that's right. It was a group of very enthusiastic new teachers.
Yeah.
It was a great group of new teachers. It was great. I don't have anything to add. I don't have anything other than the new teacher dinner. Dr. Jack?
I just wanted to mention that the V H S L Alignment Committee convened today. I actually chair that committee. And if you read the paper, you probably saw what the last alignment committee meeting there was, a proposal that came forth from 4A, which had just some really awful travel experiences for Faukeer County schools. Fortunately, the appeal was, the 4A appeal today, or a group of schools in 4A appealed today, mainly folks from Faukeer County. And the appeal was supported. So what that means is that our three high schools won't be traveling to Lynchburg, Bedford, other places, up to 145 miles away, for conference play. They'll instead be going to play mostly the southern Loudoun schools, and I believe one, maybe two of the Frederick schools. So the vote was 12 zip, so that was really good news for our schools and for our student athletes, because those would be some horrendous bus rides and a lot of early dismissals from school, which would really impact negatively instructional time. So that was good news for Faukeer County schools.
And you mentioned that our staff did a really good appeal presentation?
Yeah, the staff, our staff, our A Ds and I think Mr. Warner, Mr. Burton may have been involved in that, I'm not really sure, but I know the A Ds were involved significantly, and they worked with some of the Loudoun folks to come up with a proposal that was really out of the box and different, but still within the guidelines of V H S L that reduced travel for a lot of folks, not just us. What it meant is, instead of having four divisions within conference play, we'll have five divisions within conference play. So they'll have, in other words, smaller conferences so that there's less travel. It's basically the way it worked out. So it was good.
That's good. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Our financial management report.
Good evening. You have before you the report as of June 30th. This was run July 10th before we had done the August and September accruals. And so in this report, I do some comparison, so you can see the same time as last year. I will note that when you see negative numbers under revenues, it means we received more revenue, just the way the formula runs, so that negatives are not always bad. Only in expenditures do we maybe go over a category, but for the most parts in the revenues. This was presented to the Joint Personnel Finance Committee, and this week's finance committee will see it again. We won't, we're not quite done. We still have another week or two of journal entries and accruals that we're doing, but it's closer to the final report. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay. H R.
This looks a lot better.
It does look a lot better. Good evening. The following is a brief summary from the Human Resources Department. Currently, we have 6.5 certified positions still vacant for the start of the school year. We do have substitutes in those positions. And then for classified vacancies, we have 19. Currently, we've had 71 new teachers hired, nine new administrators, and 25 classified employees, which brings us to 105 for our total new hires. Any questions this evening?
That's great. This is a lot better. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda.
I will move that the school board approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2014 Special School Board Meeting and Work Session and July 14th, 2014 School Board Meeting, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, central office evaluation, A P Spanish textbook adoption, community relations, support services, student services, policy revisions, and religious exemption 081114.
Second.
Is there a second? Did I hear it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it.
And Madam Chair, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our new social studies supervisor, Amy Akers. Amy's been with Faukeer County Schools since 1995 as a new graduate of Shenandoah University. No, excuse me. Mary Washington. Sorry about that. My apologies. Apologies. Amy earned a master's degree from Shenandoah University in 1998. She is currently a doctoral student at Shenandoah University. Outstanding. She has been with Liberty High School ever since 1995, and she's been their department chair, I believe, since 2006. Is that correct? Also, she's been interim high school history and social studies instructional coordinator in the absence of our coordinator this past year. She stepped in, did an outstanding job in the absence of that coordinator. And she was also the 2009 Faukeer County Excellence in Education Award recipient, and she got to rub elbows with the likes of Tommy Lee Jones, Daniel Day Lewis, Sally Fields, Hal Holbrook. Did I miss anyone? Steven Spielberg. How could I, how could I forget? But Amy was in the movie Lincoln, and she had some screen time, as a matter of fact. So Amy, we're very, very glad to have you, and this is your opportunity to make 45 minutes to an hour speech to the school board. Is there anything you'd like to say? Any comments you'd like to make?
Glad to help with everybody.
All right. We're very fortunate to have you. Thank you. You're gonna do a great job. Thank you.
Good. Welcome. Welcome. That's great. Okay. Safety audit report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jack. The Division-wide Safety Audit Committee report for school year 2013-14 is submitted tonight for your information. This past school year is the first year that the state of Virginia required a Division-wide School Safety Audit Committee. Dr. Jack appointed the committee to review the various school safety audits and provide a report on the findings and plans to improve school safety. Membership of the committee is listed in the report, and if, I believe, we have one committee member here tonight, and that is Lieutenant Ray Akers, who just happens to be married to Amy Akers. And he is with the Faukeer County Sheriff's Office, so he was on the committee as local law enforcement and also on the committee as a parent. So we are grateful to him for his work on the committee. Staff support for the committee was provided by Mr. Frank Finn, Greg Livacey, and me. And we are grateful to the committee members for agreeing to serve on the committee and very thankful for their work. The report itself that you have is divided into three primary safety audit components. The school safety survey, which was completed last September, September 2013, that's an online survey that the principals and assistant principals, in some schools, the high schools, have assistant principals that complete it. Most of our schools, the principals complete it. The secondary school climate survey, which was completed in the spring 2013, and that was a random sample of 7th and 8th graders and teachers at the middle school. And then the school safety inspections that Mr. Livacey and school administrators conduct together, and they conduct them every year, and this report covers the inspections that were done in the fall and winter of last year, 2013-14. The report describes each audit component and summarizes the findings and recommendations of the committee to improve school safety. And I won't go over the findings and recommendations because they are clearly set forth in the report. However, I would like to acknowledge the high priority that this school division, at your direction and with your support, places on safety and security of students and staff in our schools, and that the recommendations that are in this report, we will consider them as we continue to make improvements in school safety. And as we go forward in subsequent years, we will consider, each year this Safety Audit Committee will convene to review the findings of the audits that are conducted each school year, and we will consider the recommendations from the prior year and report to you on the progress. So are there any questions on the report or this process, this new process that we're doing?
Just one question about the report. The recommendations, are they in any sort of order of priority when they're listed in the certain sections?
They are all important. They're all important. We're considering them all important.
When you say that you're gonna report back to the board, when will that be? Because there are some concerning things in here that I would like to hear back.
Well, if this is something if you would like to- Move to a work session at some point. I would just say that this was the first year for the committee, and we haven't been through this process before. We have internally, I know Mr. Finn with the school climate survey, and Mr. Finn and myself with the online survey have been, for example, last week, we implemented one of the recommendations, and that was to work with school administrators to discuss the online survey. Because one of the challenges when you're doing an online survey and you're a school principal or assistant principal sitting in your school and you're reading the questions, even when Frank and I read the questions, it's a matter of how you interpret it and then determine that your school's following through. And so we decided that we needed to have a discussion as a school division on what each of the questions meant. So we printed out the new survey for this year, which, by the way, is focusing more and more on threat assessment and bullying. And we talked about each of the questions and what all of us thought that the question was really trying to get at. So I think that there was some inconsistency this year, but I think as we move forward, we're gonna find that there is more consistency, not in part because we are doing things better and we are implementing safety improvements all the time, but also in part because we have a better understanding of what is really being asked and we're responding more accurately. So in some cases, I think there was a lack of accuracy just because there was a lack of understanding as to what the question really was asking. It's not always worded well.
Okay.
But pardon me to get to your question.
Sorry. The committee will be convened every spring to review the results of what was done in that September audit, the inspections, and in Frank's case, for the secondary school climate, it will be the report from last spring, because when it's done in the spring, you just don't have it in time for the Safety Audit Committee to review it until the next year, because it takes time for the state to get the information to you. So next year, at this time, we will be back with another report, and every year thereafter, you will get a report. And so part of the report then will say, this is what we've done on last year's recommendations, and now these are the new recommendations. So you'll get an update each year.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I would like to suggest that we put this on a work session. I don't know exactly which one, and maybe we could work to figure out what that is, but is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, because there were some concerns that we could-
I would like to please talk about-
Sit down and hear-
In more detail.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah. So we'll work to figure out what date that would be. Okay. All right. Great. Thanks.
Okay. Potential funding for Kettle Run-
High school second entrance.
Madam Chair, this item is in relation to the last liaison meeting, and as the board recalls, during the last school year, the board agreed to put $300,000 into an account that would be earmarked to add a second entrance to Kettle Run High School. And then there was a suggestion made later on by the board supervisors that perhaps $900,000 be placed in an account. Now, since that recommendation, there was a liaison meeting. And at the liaison meeting, there was a significant discussion about the need for, the need for a second entrance, or the need for an extended right turn-in lane off Rogues Road, or a study of the timing of the lights at Rogues Road, or perhaps the middle school drop, pickup in the mornings particularly on Rogues Road and what kind of impact that was having. So at that meeting, Mr. Warner was there, Principal Kettle Run High School. He talked about, he gave his opinion about what would fix the problem. His opinion did not include the need for a second entrance. His opinion had more to do with the light, turn-in lane, et cetera. So this is just, as stated, an information item for discussion about the additional $600,000.
Right.
Is that the direction the board wants to go? I want to remind the board that there is another liaison meeting coming up, and this is gonna be hot topic at that meeting because some of these questions were begged at the meeting, and so I suspect we'll be producing some answers at that time. So this is, you know, this is the piece for discussion, but again, there is a liaison meeting coming up. And I suspect at that meeting, there'll be perhaps a different recommendation coming from the board supervisors, school board liaison group. I don't know, but potentially.
Well, the thing that impacts me, the board, the board of supervisors would like us to do this, I think. But it seems to me is that we need to move in stages through this problem at Kettle Run, and I think we're doing exactly that, looking into the timing of the light, looking into the right turn lane, and maybe some V dot funding for that. So what I suggest that we do, what I think we should do is just hold off on this until we find out the outcome of all those other things. I think it's, whether or not and how much a second entrance would cost, I think is way down the road.
I was in, Duke and I were in the initial liaison committee meeting, and I do not remember the discussion being $900,000.
It wasn't.
It wasn't at that time. And I can tell you right now that we have many capital needs.
And $600,000, an additional $600,000 would go a long way at Taylor Cafeteria, for one. It's, and they need, desperately need some attention over there, for instance, and-
Ultimately, I think it's something that's gonna have to be done, but I don't think it has to be done in the timetable that everybody is talking about.
I think the things that we talked about in the meeting, the short-term things with the light, the timing, the extended right turn lane, I think those are good and quick fixes to get us apart. I don't think we need to move on $900,000 at this time.
I agree.
And I'll just add one other thing. We did address the problem of a second entrance for emergency situations, and we can do that if need be. We have that already-
We are having that, you know, that's done. So, and that was one of the things that was, I thought, critical a couple of years ago was that we did not have a second way in an emergency situation to get in or out, and we took care of that, so.
My opinion is that the person who has the best information on this really is Major Warner, who's there at the school and knows, you know, how the vehicles are coming in and how they're leaving. And I was involved in this from, you know, back when the Grapewood subdivision with whether or not there would be the, you know, continuation of Grapewood into the Brookside community, and as a Brookside, you know, resident, I was there. And I think that some of the common sense improvements that Mr. Warner was talking about, the extra turn lane, the timing of the buses, and the holding up of traffic for buses to get out, as well as the timing at the light, and then actually directing traffic a little bit differently within the two campuses of Greenville and the high school make a lot of sense. And I think that until we see if that really works, another entrance just for that particular purpose, I don't think, you know, with all the other, right, with all the other needs that we have, it's a want, not a need.
Okay. Mr. Gorg, you have any?
No, nothing else said. Just completely agree.
Okay. All right. So we're all in agreement there. I think that's great. Okay. Emergency, or excuse me, energy management contract award to Bowlin Train.
Good evening, everyone. Staff is bringing this side before you for information and requesting that you move into action this evening, and we are requesting that the board authorize the chairman to execute a contract with Bowlin Train Services in the amount of $129,411 for installation of energy management controls at Ritchie and Miller Elementary Schools and to replace the obsoleted central controller at Smith Elementary Schools. This would be the first phase of a three- or four-phase project, which will take the course of approximately a year to upgrade and modernize the energy management controls at our 20 schools. Currently, 15 of our schools either have no energy management, automated, energy management controls, or they only have controls in part of the school, or some of the central controllers are approaching 20 years old, they're obsolete and no longer supported by their manufacturers. So this would be the first step to upgrade all those controls. We have a total of 15 schools to work on, and this would be two and then part of another school. We have gone through a competitive qualification process. We qualified four different types of systems. The train system was one of those. The project went out for bids for these two, these three schools. Bowlin Train was the low bidder. We received three bids, and we're asking you to move this forward to action to approve this contract.
Hey, what kind of savings are we seeing on the other schools that we've done this? It's been pretty significant, right?
Well, generally, the, looking at the big picture, the last time I looked at it, about a year ago, our schools that have automated energy management controls operate at about 25 cents per square foot per year less than our schools that have no controls. There's a wide variation, but when you look at the averages, that's what it does. And the controls not only help us reduce our energy costs by automating when we run the heating and air conditioning, because as you know, our schools are constantly having their schedules changed with all the community use as well as school after-school events. We get requests through our system almost every day, change the schedule, we need to be open at night- be open at night, we don't need to be open, we've now got a church coming in on Sunday, just constant changes. These controls help us run the HVAC when we need it and not to run it when we don't need it. And then secondarily, we use it to monitor if a boiler or some chiller, some equipment doesn't start when it should. If a school starts to get too cold, it can give us an automatic alarm, to which maintenance can respond more quickly than if we wait for somebody to phone us from the school.
Okay, great. Excellent. Any other questions?
No, we've just been waiting a long time.
Absolutely.
So, glad to see it moving forward.
Yeah, well, we're, we're excited about doing it. It's definitely an improvement.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, in that case, Madam Chair, I would motion that the school board move information item, items 12C, the Energy Management Contract Award to Bowlin Train Services, to action item, is that 13B? Mm-hmm. For consideration for approval this evening.
Second. There's been a motion and a second that the school board move information item number 12C, Energy Management Contract Award to Bowlin Train Services, to action item 13B for consideration and approval this evening. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, action items. This one I put on here, and what it is, is the new foundation. The Excellence in Education Foundation has merged with the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation, and it's a real tribute to a lot of people who worked hard to make this happen. And Dr. Jack will be a, an ex officio member of the board, and we also need to appoint a school board member to also attend the meetings. So that's what this is about. So any discussion?
Do you want to volunteer?
No, I mean, do you want to do this? Do you want to do the chairman, or do you want to do a name?
Is that what?
I know, I know.
No, that's not true. If someone else would like to-
Be involved in the Excellence in Education Foundation, that would be great.
But we know how much of a passion you have for this.
Okay, let's, let's do that. That's, that's a good idea. Whoever is the chair, does that sound great? Okay. So the chair, we'll point the chair.
Okay.
So do we have a motion?
I move that the school board appoint the school board chair to serve in an ex officio capacity on the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation Board of Directors.
Second.
There's been a motion-
And a third, and a fourth.
And three seconds.
Yeah. The school board appoint the school board chairman to serve as, in an ex officio capacity on the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation Board of Directors. Any discussion?
Just a discussion point. When would be renewed? Would this just be renewed, that this policy is enacted every time a new chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that that's just-
I think that's great. That's a great idea. Any discussion? I personally would just really like to thank a few people that made this foundation happen. And the current Excellence in Education Foundation Board absolutely was so wonderful to work with in this merging. But I really want to thank Melanie Birch and Denise Sheffer, who really kick-started this whole idea, an idea whose absolute time has come. And then Ginger Callahan, it would not have happened without the work that you did. And then Pat Woodward is an attorney who is also on the board, but worked with us in the, in the forming stages to get all the articles of Confederacy and Corporation and all these legal things in order. She was excellent and volunteered a lot of hours to do that. And then lastly, I would really like to thank Dr. Jack. He really allowed this to happen, made it happen, and I really want to thank those people because it would not have happened without all of you, really. Okay, so there's been a motion, and so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, energy, energy management contract.
I move that the school board authorizes the chairman to execute a contract with Bowlin Train Services in the amount of $129,411 for installation of energy management controls at Ritchie and Miller Elementary Schools and to replace the central controller at Smith Elementary School.
There's been a- A motion and a second that the school board authorizes the chairman to execute a contract with Bowlin Train Services in the amount of $129,411 for the installation of energy management controls at Ritchie and Miller and to replace the central control at Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it.
Outstanding.
Really, a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
So be it. Okay.
Wow.